Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Beaver Creek City Council. And before we get started this evening on the official meeting, we have some real pleasure to take care of, first off. And most of you probably know, or those that don't know, there's an organization called the Beaver Creek Youth Council. And it is a group of people, and I see Mayor Carroll back in the back, I think she was one of the ones that helped get it started way back. But it was a, it's a group of young people that worked their tails off in this community and contribute, contribute a whole lot. We have three of our seniors that are graduating tonight, this year, and so we have them here with us, and there are three others that could not make it tonight. But I have the pleasure tonight of being able to present a certificate of merit to each of these seniors for their contribution to our community. I'm going to read just the basic content of one, but this shows that the importance of community youth involvement, your engagement, your engagement in your talents, your opinions, and a desire to make a difference. So therefore, and as I present this Citizen Merit Award, on behalf of myself and the entire Beaver Creek City Council, we thank you for your service and dedication to our great Beaver Creek community. So if you would like to come forward, I would love to be able to present these to you, or I can, how about, I put my mask back on, and I will come out and bring it to you, and then we can all get ready for a picture. Does that work? All right. Calista? I'd like to present this one to you. Thank you very much. I think Dayton is on the next on the list. Dayton, thank you very much. Justin? Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can you all get up here, put your elbows out? We'll break the rules just a hair. Stick your elbows out and get your picture. I'll be in the background.
I was going to say smile.
All right. And Calista, if you'd be so kind, I'd like to give these to you to relay on to the other members of your senior class.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before we stop, does either of you, any of you have something you'd like to say? Please, come on over here. Hi. Yeah, mic's right there. You can talk to council, or you can talk to the crowd, however you want.
So I've been involved in Beaver Creek Youth Council since sixth grade. My mom actually forced me to do it, and I didn't want to. But I'm very thankful for it. It's really helped me grow into the person that I am today, and my love for philanthropy and volunteering. And I definitely see how important it is for our youth, because it's helped me grow so much. And being an older member, I've watched other younger members really gain more leadership skills and really grow as leaders. So I will definitely still be involved in the community, even though I'm not in Beaver Creek Youth Council anymore, so if you ever need to volunteer for anything, I'll be there.
Oh, be careful.
Thank you.
Be careful.
I'll be there. I love doing it. But thank you for always supporting us as well.
Well, thank you. Fellas, anything you'd like to say?
So yeah, Beaver Creek Youth Council, like Callie said, my mom forced us. But no, it was definitely like a lot of fun, like once I opened up a little bit, and it definitely taught me to like get better at speaking, and just like working with other people, and learning how like event planning, and like really just like all the ins and outs of like volunteering, and how the world really works. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me be here, and Beaver Creek Youth Council is a whole lot of fun. So it was kind of cool being in Beaver Creek Youth Council, and it kind of helped me get with everyone, and kind of be more social, and it helped, and volunteering was really fun with all the fantastic stuff that they did. So that was really great. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. One of the things I always enjoyed is when the Youth Council went down to the Senior Center and interacted with the seniors at the Senior Center. It was always a really emotional time to be there, because the seniors just loved it. And before we stop on this, or in this, I do want to say the three names that could not make it tonight. Kaitlin Flynn, Sierra Rumel, and Claire Worms are the three that also were recognized but could not make it tonight. So thank you once again. Thank you very much. All right, we will now move on to the regularly scheduled meeting. And may I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bales?
Here.
Councilmember Curran?
Here.
Councilmember Duer?
Here.
Councilmember Adams?
Here.
Here. Now I turn it over to Councilmember Bales for the pledge, please.
Okay, please join me reciting the Pledge of Allegiance, and then remain standing and observe a few moments of silence to reflect on the changing times we've been facing, and pray for a united, stronger, and prosperous future in Beaver Creek.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have an agenda before us this evening. Are there any questions or changes?
Move to approve the agenda, Your Honor.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Approval of minutes. First off is June 8th, 2020, the regular meeting. Any corrections or additions?
Seeing none, move to approve June 8th regular meeting minutes. Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as submitted for June 8th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Thank you. Next are the minutes for the June 22nd, 2020, regular meeting. Any comments?
Seeing none, move to approve June 22nd regular meeting minutes.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as submitted for June 22nd. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same.
I abstain.
The abstentions, thank you. All right, next. Ordinances, resolutions, and PUDs. First off is ordinance 20-12.
This is the second reading of an ordinance to establish a new special revenue fund and to eliminate one special revenue fund in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles.
Okay, thank you. This is the second reading of ordinance 20-12. It was sponsored by Councilmember Garcia. Are there any further comments?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance 20-12.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 20-12. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next, ordinance 20-14.
This is a single reading of an ordinance to approve supplemental appropriations and certify additional revenues, beginning January 1st, 2020, and ending December 31st, 2020. Implement ordinances 19-30, 20-06, and 20-07.
Thank you.
Good evening. Teresa Hathaway, Assistant Finance Director. So this ordinance has four budgetary items for your consideration. The first item is relating to the local coronavirus relief fund. Based on House Bill 481, Green County distributed to the city over $557,000 as part of the Federal Cares Act. These funds are to be used to cover specific expenses related to COVID-19 incurred between March 1st and December 30th of 2020. Therefore, certification of revenue and appropriations for eligible expenses in the amount of $557,475 needs to be approved for the Cares Act grant. Secondly, in 2019, the Senior Center was awarded a grant in the amount of $40,000 by the Green County Council on Aging to help offset the cost of purchasing a new paratransit van. The grant for the van and the associated expenses to purchase the van were budgeted in the miscellaneous trust fund. However, the check received from the Council on Aging was inadvertently deposited to the Parks Fund instead of the miscellaneous trust fund. So in order to correct this error, an appropriation of the amount of $40,000 needs to be adopted for the Parks Fund so that the grants can be correctly allocated to the miscellaneous trust fund. The third item in this ordinance is regarding a donation made to the Regional Emergency Response Team Fund. Mr. Greg Dayton-Stanton, sorry, I'm not sure quite how to say that, a volunteer medic for the RERT made a $7,000 donation to be used to support the overall mission of the team. The RERT commander would like to use the donation to provide advanced training for team members. Therefore, $7,000 needs to be certified in donations, and an additional, and additional appropriations approved in the amount of $7,000 to be used for training. And then the last item relates to the Cemetery Bequest Fund. Currently, there is $200,000 budgeted in the general fund for a new columbarium to be built at Mount Zion Cemetery. It was determined that funds available in the Cemetery Bequest Fund can be used for capital improvements. Therefore, it was determined that half of the columbarium project, $100,000, be paid from the Cemetery Bequest Fund in order to reduce general fund expenditures. So therefore, we are requesting that $100,000 be appropriated in the Cemetery Bequest Fund for capital improvements, and to reduce appropriations by $100,000 in the general fund. So staff recommends adoption of ordinance 20-14.
Thank you. This is the, the first reading of this ordinance is, it's the single reading, by the way. Is there anyone present tonight that would like to have a question or address council on this ordinance? Anyone at all? Okay, thank you. We'll go on to council. Any questions or comments from council? Teresa, I think you got off.
All righty.
You did a great job of presenting.
Thank you.
No questions. So thank you very much. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 20-14. And I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Curran?
Yes.
Councilmember Duer?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember Bales?
Yes.
Mayor Stone?
Yes. Thank you. All right, moving on on the agenda, short agenda tonight, we have council time, which is where council can let everybody know what's been going on. So I would like to start with Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it. I would again congratulate the six graduating members of our Beaver Creek Youth Council. I know that that is a very dedicated group of young individuals who are shaping tomorrow's leaders. They do a lot of volunteer work in the community. The mayor already mentioned that they go down to the Senior Center to host the dances and interact with them, as well as some other, number of other fundraisers that they have. Just a great group of young individuals. If you have children, youth age, you'd like to get to know more. I know Vice Mayor Adams is kind of heading up the committee as a council representative right now, but anyone who's interested, I would encourage you to participate and get involved. It's a great program. The other thing I will say too, is that my family and I had the opportunity to get out and get involved in the local community recently, just by being able to go back to some of the restaurants. I will say that I am so proud of our local restaurants and businesses for keeping everybody safe. Any restaurant you walked into is cleaner than you've ever seen in the past. The social distancing is absolutely being abided by, they are abiding by face masks, and all of the workers are doing everything that they possibly can. So if you feel comfortable, and you are able to, I would encourage you to get out, go visit some of our local establishments. I know that they need the help, and it's really nice to get out and enjoy the nice weather at some of our restaurants. So if you're able to do so, I would encourage you to, and enjoy the good weather. And that's all for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Schwartz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would also like to echo some of the comments by Councilmember Garcia about youth council. I want to congratulate the six seniors on their graduation, and as she said, they are still very involved in the community, and they give back in a variety of ways. They also help do fundraising for Feed the Creek amongst all of the other things that Councilmember Garcia had mentioned. So again, congratulations to them, and definitely encourage the youth in the community to get involved. Second, I wanted to thank all of the sponsors for the Fourth of July event. While I was unable to attend, I did get to watch it at home on my computer screen, so it was pretty cool. It was neat to be able to watch it virtually, even though I couldn't get out and about, so I very much appreciated that. And then again, to echo some of the comments by Councilmember Garcia, there have been a lot of new businesses in the community that have opened up. There have also been a lot of them who were previously open and are just now opening their doors, so encourage everyone to visit those. I know some of the most recent ones are Candado Tacos. Excel Sports Medicine had an open house this weekend. Again, I was unable to attend that, but just welcoming them, and the new Pilates studio that they have opened in their new building to the community, as well as Southern Ohio Brewery. That's all I have. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Curran?
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, as already been mentioned by Councilmember Garcia, congratulations to the youth council members that have served so ably over these last several years. And again, we want to encourage citizens in our community to try to get involved with that group, doing a lot of good things. Certainly, the restaurants has also been mentioned, a very positive thing. Had the opportunity to go to...
Candado.
Candado, yeah, the other night. Really great crowd of people, and a lot of fun. Want to encourage our citizens, as already been mentioned, to get out and support our many, many restaurants and retail establishments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Duer?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to echo the sentiments already regarding the Beaver Creek Youth Council. Really terrific work. Like to thank the Parks Recreation and Culture Department with three young children. We have been to the following parks: Royal Point, Gaspacha, Owens Place, Creekside Trail, and Rust Nature Reserve, all in the last few weeks, so they're all looking terrific, especially those impacted by the tornado. Some really excellent work rebuilding. Like to thank the city manager, the mayor, and all of the sponsors for the July 4th fireworks. What a fantastic evening. I spent some time chatting with a number of people, and then I went back to my neighborhood where I was able to watch it from my driveway, so really an excellent event. Finally, my church, University Baptist Church, enjoyed its first service outside, this, two weeks ago, July the 5th, so I want to thank the city for moving through the zoning application process, for getting the support of the use of the tent outside, so thank you for that. And just a reminder in general to small businesses or groups throughout the city that if there's some kind of issue with COVID-19, just reach out, make a phone call. We are all here at the city willing to work with you, and to help you with necessary zoning permits, et cetera, where it fits. So please do that, and a thank you to the city.
Thank you. Councilmember Bales?
Thank you, Mayor. Like others, I would also like to thank the city manager, city and staff, and all of the sponsors who helped contribute to the amazing fireworks on the 4th. I also want to thank them all at Fairfield Commons for allowing the activities to take place. Frankly, I think that was an awesome venue for, for that, and I sure, I sure enjoyed it, my daughter enjoyed it, and I think from a traffic and a flow perspective, everything really worked very well. I too would like to congratulate and welcome Candado Tacos to Beaver Creek. My family and I ate there last week. The food was awesome, and the decor inside that building is unlike any other restaurant in the area. So my family found it very fun and intriguing, and it kept my kids looking all around and so forth, so I'd encourage people to go and shop local, as always. I have been getting a lot of phone calls and emails from residents on both sides of the wearing a mask in public debate, so I thought just kind of bring it up and, and say how proud I was of the fact that Green County got reduced to a level one. And I think that's in a large part because people are doing their part, staying socially distanced and wearing a mask when, when they can't, or when they're, when they're out and about and can't quite socially distance. So I just want to say thank you to our residents, really for doing, doing what needed to be done to continue that downward trend, and, and we're obviously listening to the Health Department and taking what they say into consideration. And since I wasn't at the last council meeting, I wanted to make a couple of comments about July being Parks and Recreation Month. As you may or may not know, my career started in the Parks and Recreation field, and I think it is important, like Glenn and his family have been doing, to visit parks. And I could probably add to your list here. I know I've been to Spicer Heights, Nutter Park, and Rotary Park in the last three days, so anyway, I want to encourage everyone to get out, enjoy the parks we have to offer, so that's all I've got.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Adams?
I always think about going last. It's checkmark, checkmark, checkmark. But I, I want to congratulate the high school seniors from the Beaver Creek Youth Council. I've worked with them several times over the years, and the different activities that they do, and the money they raise and then donate back to different organizations in the city. They do an excellent job, and I really wish them well in their future endeavors, hoping they get to enjoy their college days, or whatever it is in their future. Again, the fireworks, I think the, being able to celebrate the Fourth of July and Beaver Creek's 40th anniversary with the fireworks this year was, was a good thing. I think we needed it. With the number of people that were there at the mall, I was, I think there was a lot of people, not just from Beaver Creek, but there were a lot of people that visited there. And to Councilman Bales' point, the traffic was great. We, I worked traffic, and we got it out there. They were cleared out in less than 20 minutes, so it was really nice. Also, please continue to support our local Beaver Creek businesses. They may try to maintain the new normal. It's difficult for them, they need our help, and even if it's a takeout call, and try to avail of their services. And then as of this afternoon, Green County continues to stay at level one, which is a good thing. That means that everybody's doing what they should be doing, and we need to continue to do that. So you know, wear your face covering, maintain your social distance, and wash your hands frequently. That seems to be the, the top three things to do, and hopefully we'll all get through this with very little problems. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. And for me, I would like to say a big thank you to our staff, and to the mall, and to our sponsors for the fireworks on the Fourth of July. It was, it was certainly different, it was a, it was enjoyable, it was, traffic was easy. So we need to keep that in mind as we move into 2021, but it was a fantastic job by everybody that took part in that. And you know, all of us up here, we get calls and emails, multiple calls and emails a day almost, about the mask situation when it comes to COVID. And it's, you know, we've already heard that we've dropped down to a level one, so first I'll get on board and congratulate our residents for, for helping our county get down to a level one. But we have all these sources. We're bombarded with sources of information from this, from the CDC, to the World Health Organization, to the Surgeon General, to our governor's office, you can go on and on, Dr. Faulke. And then you have all the ones that are not real, that are on social media. And so it's hard out there to understand what it is we really should be doing, and what it means. But there's no doubt, I don't think, that social distancing is probably the number one. Now you can say washing hands and face coverings might be tied for number two, but the, but if you're outside, and you have distance between people, be smart. You know what, you know what distance is you need to be from somebody else. If you get in, I did notice, I went to three different groceries over the week, weekend, different Beaver Creek grocery stores, and mask or face covering wearing has gone up. The, I guarantee you on, over the weekend, the three I was in, it was at least 75%, maybe higher. And so that's a, it's a good direction. People are doing this without being told that they have to do it. So people are finally, we are, myself included, because I'm not one that, I'm a little reluctant on when it comes to masks, but I have to, I have to take, do my due diligence as well. So I just ask everybody to be smart, be safe, and you know what you need to do, to protect yourself, and to help protect others as well. So I just ask everybody to be patient, and we will get through this. And that said, I do want to add one thing to that, and that is, I want to compliment our Green County Health Director. She has been on top of this from day one. She's in constant communication with us here at City Hall. She's very knowledgeable, very accessible. So when, none of us up here are doctors, so when we need to worry about a health issue, we're, I, and I assume probably all of council, are going to rely tremendously on our Health Director. So we are, if she, something changes, and things go the wrong direction, and she recommends action, then I think we will probably jump on board and, and help her with her actions she needs to take. But that, in my opinion, this is purely personal, and that is, that that's where that initiative needs to be, needs to be with that Health Director. It doesn't need to be a ordinance from city council. So we'll see where, where it goes, and if they ask for an ordinance, then that might be another story, but that, as far as the Health Director. But I think she has the authority to do what she needs to do, and to keep us as safe as we can be. So that being said, everybody enjoy your summer, the rest of your summer, and get out and social distance where you can. So then that, I'll turn it over to the city manager, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too, the Fourth of July event was a very good event, and I wanted to thank staff, specifically Kim Farrell, our park superintendent, and Aaron Harris. They worked on the coordination part once we were getting it set up. Fourth of July committee, you've got to remember, there's a committee, although it drastically changed this year, but they definitely helped in the guiding of the decision process. And of course, the police, but I wanted to thank, it's easy to forget, the COPP that did all the traffic control and helped us with much of that, and all those are volunteers, so definitely appreciate the COPP. Vice Mayor Adams, he was one of them. And again, the mall and all the sponsors, they, absolutely, it was a great event. I do echo that. Just tonight, real quick, I did want to acknowledge, we will officially do this next month in August, but effective July 5th, we did have some changes made within the Police Department. We had a official unofficial badge pinning the other week, last week, in the, what's that called, the car, where the car, Sallyport? Yeah, I had to think of the Sallyport. Luckily, it was in the shade, it was still 90, but hey, we were there. Captain Jeff Fiorida was, has been promoted to Deputy Chief. Congratulations, Deputy Chief. Sergeant Sean Sumner was promoted to Captain, and he will be in command of the Special Services Division. Detective Brad Pieschke, if I can ever get his name right, one of these days, was promoted to Sergeant and Patrol Supervisor in Operations Division. As you all know, this was part of our, well, not these names specifically, but our, what's happening this year is our retirement of our Police Chief, and so this is the plan in place, prior to his leaving, that we get the positions in place, especially now, well, anytime, but especially now with things, the things that are happening in the world from coronavirus to everything else, it's important that we have a command structure in place, and there's no lagging behind of that, those decisions. So congratulations to them. Again, we plan on August bringing them before council to officially congratulate them. But I just wanted to go ahead and let that be known. that be known. Next, construction. One of the, yeah, I could talk the rest of the night on all the construction that's going on, but two things I want to hit on is Kemp Road whitening. It's, if you noticed, now all the lanes are shifted, and now there's new pavement on the south side of the roadway. That's beginning today. They were going to start stormwater on the north side. That's those big concrete pipes that they were putting in. That'll help with the drainage in those areas as well. So, it's kind of, it's a road project, but when we do road projects, we look at the whole street as a project, and that includes stormwater. So, that should help in that area. Traffic pattern will remain until the work is completed along the north side of roadway, storm curb, pavement, sidewalk, and grading. So, that, and then they'll switch sides. The grant, this is, I just wanted to remember, remind everybody, we did post this on Facebook today, some more in-depth information. But this was the project, the Kemp Road, including the lighting, was a grant funding, a little over $2.3 million in grant funds, and a total project was $3.75 million. And not to burst anybody's bubble, this is not going to be done this year. So, I wanted to let you know. When we're waiting on grant money, they always give it over two years to start with. So, this will go two seasons. So, we're looking at early fall, maybe at the earliest, be late summer of next year, 2021, before it's all done. Very similar to what happened at Dayton-Zenia and what will happen with Dayton-Zenia, where it takes us two years. And unfortunately, you know, the snow flies, and there's orange barrels during the winter, and we'll get it as smooth and white as we can get before the snow season starts. But when you're dealing with grant money, that's the way it kind of goes, and the large size of the project as well. And that leads me to the next thing, which people, a lot of people want to know about, is the annual resurfacing and curb replacement program. So, this is going to start this week. Curb replacement will start ahead of the resurfacing, because you do the curbs before you start with the pavement. And that'll take through August. Resurfacing is currently scheduled to begin late August through October, through October. There is a list, if you're curious, if your street is on there, if you go to the Beaver Creek website, go under the Engineering Department, Division, you will see street resurfacing. Click on that, and it will give you a list of your, the streets, on the primary streets, and then there's another list on alternate streets. And last year, if you remember, because of the tornado, we were not able to get to the alternate streets because we had the holdback funding for the tornado. We should be able to get to the alternate streets, hopefully, if the way it goes, we budget so much money. But if it ends up, the cost of blacktop, the cost of everything, and the cost of the curbs, and just all depends. Most of the time, we have some money left to go ahead and go do some additional paving. So, we hope we do have that. But there is a list of alternate streets, too. So, you could, you could possibly get your street if you're an alternate street as well. Any questions on this, though, feel free to call our engineering office at 427-5513. And that's all I have tonight.
Well, thank you. Moving on, this is the time for citizen input. If there's anyone here this evening that would like to address council on any issue at all, please come forward, give us a name and address. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes unless you have time donated by up to two others.
Hi.
Hello.
My name's Eric Zahn. I live at 2654 Solitaire Lane. Is that it?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Sorry, blanking really quick. So, one thing I was just very curious about was, you know, headlines all across the U.S. are showing that one of the main things coming up is what's colloquially being called a housing apocalypse or an eviction apocalypse. So, in New York City alone, 25% of citizens have not been able to pay their rents since March, and as of July 1st, 30% of America was not able to pay their rent. So, my question was, this and a lot of the other things with coronavirus, what are you guys doing, or what is the city doing, to address the fact that, you know, people aren't able to pay their rents? And with the pandemic, it would be completely unconscionable to throw them out on the streets or throw them out of their homes and potentially be exposed to the virus. So, I was just curious if you guys were doing anything, or if the city was doing anything as this is, as we are barreling towards this reality.
Okay. Normally, this time is not an interacting time, but I would like to ask Mr. McHugh, if he, this would be a court issue and a, or prosecutor's office issue more so than a city issue, Steve, is that, what do you think?
I would agree, and also, under the Cares Act, there is a provision for three to four months, three months, three or four months. And there's also, Congress is considering extending that. I saw one proposal that today would take it to March of 2021 to hold off on evictions. So, right now, under Cares Act, you know, I'm not sure it has expired, but it's getting close to expiring. But right now, it's really being held off, because I know one of the attorneys who does a lot of it, and his clients are not evicting.
Right. Most of that sort of issue is dealt in this area by the county courts, and so this is, it's not something that's really within our jurisdiction to mandate one way or the other.
Gotcha.
So, I appreciate the input, and I'm sure, you know, that it'll be passed on. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else wish to address council? Seeing none? Anything for the good, anybody?
Move to adjourn.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. We are adjourned. Thank you.